Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. We're back from recess and continuing on with the agenda. Tony, do you want to call the roll just to confirm that we have a quorum?
Jimenez. Torres, Cohen. Ortiz. Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelaus.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Here.
Kameh.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are picking up with item 7.1, Blue Zones Assessment Readiness and Feasibility Report, and I'll turn it over to Angel.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Angel Rios, Deputy City Manager. Joining me here in the box is the Vice President of Blue Zones, Margaret Brown, our point person on their Children and Youth Master Plan Program Manager, PRNS Laura Buzo, and Assistant to the City Manager, Peter Hamilton. And the Blue Zones Assessment Readiness and Feasibility Report that you're going to hear about today is a cross-reference report from the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee. First, I'd like to take a moment, though, to acknowledge the work that has made this report possible. City funding for this effort was originally proposed by Councilmember Dev Davis through the 2023-24 budget process, and that was eventually approved by the council. NSC, the NSC Committee, provided additional guidance and feedback that guided this work. The city funding was further augmented by additional grants from the County of Santa Clara, Adobe, Santa Clara Family Health Plan, and the Health Trust. I'll also note that, from the start, we embedded the Blue Zones framework into the work of our city's Children and Youth Services Master Plan, as both efforts aim to coordinate across agencies and community partners to improve the well-being of our residents. So to tell you more about the report's findings, we're pleased to have Margaret Brown here today, and I'll turn it over to her so she can kind of go over the report.
Great, thank you, Angel. Thank you all for having us here tonight and putting us on the agenda. A very exciting time for us, a culmination of really more than a year's worth of work. We kicked off this process in January. We'll look at that timeline a little bit more here in a few minutes. I want to first say also a great thank you. And I was remiss in not acknowledging this in the county meeting earlier, but I just want to say thank you to Dev's team that have supported the planning, Nicole Eredros and Mary Ann, as well as Cindy Chavez and her team with coming to the table, Angel and Laura and his team that have been working behind the scenes, and to our steering committee who are listed inside of that report. So I just want to say thank you. Their work has made this possible. It has been, at times, you know, late nights and early mornings, as we're some of us on the East Coast and some of us on the West Coast, but it's all worked out and couldn't be happier today to be able to present this, this report. As we get in with the time that we have, I want to quickly go through just a couple of things. First, I want to orient anyone who is not familiar with Blue Zones and just what is Blue Zones. Blue Zones, first of all, our purpose is to empower everyone everywhere to live better, longer. This work, this purpose, was developed out of the research of Dan Butner Sr. and the National Geographic Team that sought to find the longest-lived populations in the world. The learnings and observations from those longest-lived populations, places in the world where individuals are living to age 100, about 10 times the rate that we do here in the United States on average. And it was through those research study, understanding kind of the environmental factors that lead to that extra-long, healthy life. With that, Blue Zones has brought those learnings, those Power 9, into what we call the Life Radius, focusing in on the people we spend our time with, the places, the where we spend our time, and the policies that are creating environments that really help with that choice architecture. What do people have access to in and throughout their daily lives in terms of food? Built environment, how is that kind of guiding us or helping or preventing health, happiness, and well-being, as well as alcohol and tobacco? The assessment process that we kicked off in January is a process by which we get a preliminary understanding of the community. So we do that through robust planning. We spent the first, really, four to five months, understanding who do we need to engage with? Who do we need to talk to? He needs to be in the room. Additionally, what are the reports, documents, plans, comp plans, master plans, studies that have already been completed, and what can we learn from those and fold them into this framework? We also completed some data analysis using the Well-being Gallup data to understand what is kind of driving overall well-being here in the city of San Jose, as well as where are the value, where is the value and the potential impact for the future? If this project is to move forward, we would begin that project with a nine-month foundation and planning phase. It's very important to call out that during this phase, there would be nine more months of dedicated time within the community to work alongside the community and community stakeholders to design exactly how these recommendations and potentially other evidence-based measures show up for them in their communities. So this is not completed, the work is not completed. We would have to continue to convene, do some additional learning. Importantly, complete an oversample using data so that well-being measurement, set metrics and targets for impact that would be realized over what's called Transformation, a three-to-five-year process that culminates with certification. So that is really the process for a Blue Zones project. I want to quickly showcase, I'm here today on my own, but we have an entire team that's been dedicated to the San Jose project. Some of these individuals you have probably met, spoken with, seen in other presentations. They have really been either working directly behind the scenes or here in the community as part of the assessment process to help bring together this report that each of you have at your desk today. Just calling out some of the engagement that we have had. Over 100 individuals participated in sessions to really understand key sectors of policy. These are really leaders that are working in, in key neighborhoods, in organizations, nonprofit organizations, on the ground, with schools, in your work sites, et cetera, to drive some of these strategies on the ground today or either leading efforts that are addressing some of the areas that Blue Zones works. Leadership discussions, we brought together a healthcare roundtable. We had a sports roundtable. We had other leadership discussions. Some of you may have participated in that. And also had some broad, open-to-community-type presentations. Also had an opportunity to invite the community in to learn more about Blue Zones. We had over 130 participants in that night alone. So in addition to that, there have been others since then that have come to the table, had discussions, and have helped inform the process. Let me go back if it'll allow me. Here on the screen is what really is a very challenging process. If all of you, in front of you, have a couple of documents. You have a very robust bound report version, and then you also have a one-pager kind of summary document that, that attempts to pull together what we learned over the nine months of being engaged with San Jose. In the report is much more detail on each of these items that are on the screen now. I just want to call out a couple of, a couple of things. First of all, while we were looking at the whole of San Jose, we did align with the Children and Youth Services Master Plan and put a deep emphasis and focus on those pilot communities that are called out by the CYSMP. So we really looked at Seven Trees, Poco Way, Somos Mayfair, et cetera, and, and really spent some time in those communities. These recommendations opportunities are not necessarily fully dedicated only to those communities, but I think these are the recommendations that most closely align to the CYSMP, and all of these would have a tremendous impact, especially on the east side of San Jose. So for example, when we're looking at built environment, you know, a lot of individuals that participated in these sessions called out, in their own way, things like, "We would like to have walkable, complete streets in our community." Youth, the youth commissioners that participated, "We simply would like to have a place to gather with people our age that is safe and accessible." Many of them that participated also said, you know, it's, you have to wait till you get your driver's license in order to like drive somewhere, to meet your friends, to sit down at a coffee shop or in a park and come together. So we would like to have that in our neighborhood on the east side. When looking at things around seniors, seniors who are living there, is it safe for them to be wheelchair-accessible? Is there complete streets that allow for safe crossing, pedestrian crossways, et cetera? So there's a lot that goes on in the built environment. I think one of the most important is simply amplifying green space, developing the tree canopy, bringing in quick-build demonstration projects that help amplify the need there and also bring the user engagement in a little bit more. On the food systems side, it really is looking at, how do we build a system around food, food culture, food accessibility? That is healthy food and healthy food options. So while there are some local markets there that do have fresh fruits and vegetables, et cetera, there's also the need to bring in things like grab-and-go, quick, healthy meals, food skills development, other types of issues around food that can help amplify the availability of that food and, and connect it directly back with the community. In the areas of alcohol and tobacco, I would say, while there's some great policies in place, we really need to work on reducing the total number of outlets that are tobacco, alcohol, selling and providing these products, and especially around youth, areas where youth are regularly convening. And there's some great, some detail there in that as well. When it comes to schools, you know, we saw firsthand a lot of great work happening in the schools, a lot of great partnerships with public health and other agencies there. But really, a core recommendation is to revitalize the wellness committees and create a structure by which you can bring youth leadership into that process, as well as parents, teachers, et cetera. Work sites, definitely a need to engage more work sites in this process, including those work sites where individuals living on the east side are predominantly working. That could be small work sites, large work sites. But really, a need to engage them, understand how we can support them, optimizing the environments to increase not only total access to health and benefits, but environments that are going to support health and well-being long-term. And then some really key things with restaurants and grocery stores. You have wonderful environment of restaurants and grocery stores available on the east side, culturally diverse, many options. I think there's some opportunity there to strengthen the overall health profile in partnership with those restaurants. It does not diminish their bottom line, but helps to actually boost their bottom line, as well as making it more accessible-friendly, price-point-friendly to families that are on that side of the community. And then finally, bringing in civic, faith-based organizations, volunteers, and ambassadors to be aligned in this way, offering the similar type of programming within their institutions and, and creating a social gathering place that's focused on creating a culture of health and well-being. So these, these things are color-coded in where they align and touch in on the Children and Youth Services Master Plan. With the Blue Zones, we would imagine a process by which we would be setting up leadership structure and committee structures, and would be bringing in youth as ambassadors to be serving in each of those areas to help make this more especially designed and tailored to the needs of the youth and especially in the areas that, that overlies with the CYSMP. We have, from this process, put forward an initial recommendation for a Blue Zones project that would be focused on the east side in these core communities. We are actively in this process, engaging with other cross-sector leadership to really take the next step that is, you know, not just a city-focused or county-focused initiative or a city-county nonprofit-partnered initiative, but how do we engage with those that have already been at the table in the way of, for example, Adobe? And how do we increase that and get more of your private sector at the table, joining in with this effort, investing in this process? And that, that work is underway, and we hope to have an update at a later time. I will say we have some great partners here in the city, as well as within the county, that is working alongside us to make that a reality. And with that, I will turn it back for some closing remarks and questions.
Great. And Angel, does that conclude the report?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the report. We're going to actually go to public comment first, and then we'll come back to the council. Tony?
Ally Victorine. And that's the only speaker I have for this item.
Okay, and I see Ally coming down.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. My name is Ally Victorine, and I am here as a resident of 95111, one of the target zip codes. Been there for 43 years, raised our family there. I am also the president of the Seven Trees Neighborhood Association, the president of the D7 Leadership Group, and the secretary for the DKG Zeta Theta Chapter, which is an educators' society made up of retired and current teachers. I'm busy. All three of these groups have asked me to speak on their behalf in support of Blue Zones and to encourage you to continue with this project and with the collaboration between the county and the city. And now I'm hearing nonprofits and profit, for-profit, like Adobe. So as residents of the Seven Trees, we are excited about the prospects of building a stronger, safer, and healthier community. We've done a lot of work. The city has done a lot of work. The county has done a lot of work, and there's still a lot of work to do. And the surrounding neighborhoods of, of D7 know that improvements in one neighborhood, like Seven Trees and Santee, will radiate out to all of District 7. And as educators, we know that the alignment of Blue Zones with the Youth and Children's Master Plan and focusing on, on children will benefit not only today, but the future as healthy children are able to learn better, make better decisions, raise healthier families. So really, thank you, thank you, Dev, for all of your work on this, bringing us the possibility of the Blue Zones, and we hope that you support it and bring it to us. We are so excited and ready to work. Thank you.
Back to council.
Great, thank you, Tony. Okay, coming back to my colleagues, I'm going to turn first to Councilmember Davis, who has been leading the charge on this effort.
Thank you, Mayor. For, for those of you who don't know, it was really the pandemic as, as a traumatic event, but also where health disparities were clearly revealed to us on council in very, very stark life-and-death terms that, that really got me interested in, in bringing this to us as a way to transform our community. And I think for many people, especially our youth, and we heard this over the summer, there is still an uphill recovery process from the pandemic still taking place. And so I, I am convinced that now more than ever, our community needs us to bring a transformative process to them, to, to do things differently to help them thrive. And this very, very large report is large because there are so many things that the Blue Zones project brings to the community all at once. It, what you saw in the, kind of the eye chart slide, bringing together schools, work sites, restaurants, grocery stores, and churches. It's really meeting people where they are and going so deep into the community in a way that frankly Laura did for the Children and Youth Services Master Plan to see what people wanted for their youth and wanted out of our services at the city and the county. And it's, it's kind of taking that information and then going back out and really pulling them into a, a project that, that is transformative for them individually, for their families, and for our community writ large. I feel really strongly that, that we need to, that we need to do this. And I, I just want to say that I'm very grateful to Christine Kraft, who worked in my office for a year or two, actually nine months, to help us get all of the funding. And I'm very grateful to the Adobe Foundation, the mayor and council for the, the budget message in, in accepting the budget in 2324 that helped provide the seed funding for this. The Health Trust, the County of Santa Clara, and the Santa Clara Family Health Plan for supporting the work of the assessment. And I would be remiss if I didn't also thank Supervisor Cindy Chavez and her whole team who coordinated with us so that we could do this in partnership with the county. And we really have found, very early on, Deputy City Manager Angel Rios found a nexus between the Blue Zones work and the Children and Youth Services Master Plan work. And so I'm thankful to him and to Laura Buzo, and, and Peter Hamilton's come on in, in just the last couple of months to help us get this over the goal line, and very thankful for the leadership, the creative thinking, the work, and, and the guidance during this phase. And so today, we have the results of the assessment, which focus in on those three zip codes that are identified as pilot sites in the Children and Youth Services Master Plan. And if you saw the memo from, from myself and my colleagues, these, these zip codes are 95116, 95112, and 95111. So that's the, the Mayfair, Poco Way, and Santee, Seven Trees areas. And this is not a cheap program. I just want to be clear. And I'm not asking for any money from the council, and we didn't ask for any money from the county earlier today because it's really important for us to bring in private philanthropy and, and work site dollars into this, into this process because the transformation that we're going to have to do at the city and that the county's going to have to do will involve re, kind of reorienting the funding that we already, that we already have and use to really make sure that we're providing equitable spaces and equitable mobility options for, for the, the east side in a way that I think we haven't really done before. So it will also require a transformation at both the city and the county. And I just want to say, I'm glad I have a little bit of time left. If you, if you didn't see that on the placemat, one of the most startling statistics in this is the cost of status quo of doing nothing. The Blue Zones team conservatively estimates that without a transformation, the annual medical and productivity cost will increase annually by $1.9 billion over the decade, which means that San Jose will incur a cumulative burden of $15.1 billion more in medical costs and $7.6 billion more in lost workforce productivity. That's a huge drain on our economy. And I know you can look at those and go, "Well, medical costs, we don't, we don't pay those." But remember that we're a large employer for the city of San Jose, and we do pay those costs for our community as well. So I don't think we, we can afford to really do nothing. And we have this opportunity to build on the develop, the partnership that we've already developed with the county, to bond our two levels of government, to transform positive outcomes for children and youth in our community. And so with that, I would like to move the memo written by myself and councilmembers Foley, Ortiz, and Dwan with some additions because the county basically passed a very similar motion earlier today, and they added in item 2A1, in the Identification of Service Duplication and Gaps, they added childcare services into that list. And then in 2A2, in Assessment of Infrastructure Assets and Gaps, they added childcare facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Let's go to Vice Mayor Kamau.
Thank you so much. I want to commend my colleague, Councilwoman Dev Davis, on this. This is one of those things where she has planted the seeds of whose trees and fruit she will never see. This is, this is a very, very long, long, long-term vision, and I'm just honored that she's going to leave that legacy. And whenever someone says "Blue Zone," they're going to say, "Dev Davis, Dev Davis, Dev Davis." And so I think that it is, it is, it is something to commend and, you know, to be grateful for because I think that you're really on to something because it really, it really is more, it encompasses a more holistic view of the whole child, the whole family, the whole community, the whole environment, and making it better. So thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Candelaus?
No, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to quickly thank Councilmember Davis for your leadership on this. As a member of the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee, we did hear Blue Zones and the update and the status updates a few times. And so, so it's, it's, I'm happy to be here today. So my, all of our colleagues can see the, the great work that's been put in, as well as the work that's set before us. And, and I'm especially grateful for, for the inclusion of the 95122 zip code, which includes Welch Park and Meadow Fair in my district as part of that gap analysis to see what kind of transportation, library, and youth services we can better provide for, for our community because we do need to do better. And, and I, I am grateful for that, and I look forward to building on, on the solid foundation you, you've helped spearhead. So thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. We'll go over to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to start by thanking both our city staff and our Blue Zones staff for their work on this really important report. And of course, I want to join my colleagues in elevating Councilmember Davis for her leadership on this issue. As you come to the final months of your, your term, I just want to let you know that this is a great gift to District 5 and District 7 and to the east side, and that we really appreciate your, your leadership, you know, coming all the way from Willow Glen, but you, you still prioritize our, our most hearted, hit, hit neighborhood. So I just really want to elevate you and thank you for, for that work. But this report is a terrific needs assessment and detailed look at where the city is in regards to our public health. In particular, it shows the need to address the historic inequities that continue to be felt in our east San Jose neighborhoods, regardless of its District 5 or District 7. You know, the residents of the two neighborhoods in my district, Mayfair and Poco Way, that are part of the Children and Youth Master Plan pilot project, are working-class families, immigrants, most of whom are people of color and, and come from these working-class, working-poor backgrounds. And one of the big takeaways in this report is there are severe differences in the environment our people are growing up throughout the city, depending on what zip code or what neighborhood, you know, you're raised in, and undoubtedly has an effect on our, our residents' health. In particular, areas like east San Jose are in dire need of investment in their built environment, including east San Jose's parks and green spaces. And I'm glad to support our memo with Councilmember Davis's leadership, along with Councilmember Foley and Councilmember Dwan, to heighten the city's coordination with the county on the pilot program areas. And I'm hopeful that private funding can yield some real results so that all San Jose residents can live long and healthy lives because regardless of what neighborhood you're born into or where you live, you deserve to live a long and healthy life here in San Jose. So thank you so much.
Thanks, councilmember. Councilmember Foley?
I too want to acknowledge Councilmember Davis. I remember when she brought this in, and I actually didn't make the connection between COVID and where we are today. But listening to your presentation on Blue Zones actually made me think about Project Cornerstone and the 41 developmental assets that our children need in order to thrive and be successful. Blue Zones takes it a step further. It incorporates the whole family, the whole community, and encourages us and really demands us to make the changes we need to make our environment better for all around us. And focusing on the three zip codes that are, that are part of the pilot, pilot program makes absolute sense. If we're going to see success... If we're going to see success, we must start there, and we must be successful. The families in those communities deserve it. So thank you, Dev, for bringing this forward and for allowing me to participate in your Brown Act. I look forward to seeing it go forward, and I'm truly proud to be part of your legacy that will be going forward. This will be called the Dev Davis Blue Zones, I think. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. Is that another hand going up? All right, Councilwoman Jimenez?
I'll just say thank you for all the work, Councilmember Davis. And I also wanted to highlight, 95111 also encompasses areas in District 2, the Round Table area, the Project Hope areas, the Edenvale neighborhood. There's an Edenvale Community Center, for example, that has, I think, some vacant space. I know part of the goal is to establish an office in that respective area, so just wanted to highlight that. This isn't only San Jose, it's south San Jose as well, because many of the neighborhoods that are impacted by everything that Councilmember Davis has mentioned really are in all parts of the city. And I think oftentimes we forget that. So I just wanted to highlight 95111, south San Jose, and some of these areas that need assistance as well.
And Councilmember, you know, many have referenced kind of the pilot locations. An alarming, really disturbing statistic that really came out of this Blue Zones report from Dr. Denev out of the University of Oxford, found that residents living in these zip codes have a shorter, lower life expectancy of three to five years. So when we went back and geomapped it and kind of looked at, took a deeper dive, we found that, on average, residents east of 101 and in these high-need areas have shorter lifespans. And so I think that in and of itself is kind of really our call to action, right, which is how do we impact the built environment? How do we impact access to better food and nutrition? How do we level the playing field a little bit around, you know, the disproportionate access to alcohol and tobacco and other things that are impacting our young people and other families? And so, yeah, that was an alarming statistic that I just wanted to share.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I think I'm not the only one up here, but my family lives in the 95111 area code and in some of those neighborhoods. And so, you know, the statistics bear out that maybe some of my own family members won't live that long if they continue to live in that area, or unless the area gets improved and gets the services and all these different things, the wraparound sort of work, if you will, the Blue Zone-related work, I think is super important. I would also say that, because, as an example, the Round Table area falls in the 95111 area code, I don't know if that's too many ones, but what I can tell you is we've been actively working in that space for many years in that neighborhood, trying to improve a lot of the traffic patterns and things of that nature. So I'd like to think that some of that work is already natural, has been happening by some of the work that we as council members and the community folks have been doing. And so I'm hoping this, when it gets up and running, helps supplement some of what's been done already. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. Let's go over to Councilwoman Dewan.
Well, I want to echo everything that the rest of our colleagues have already said. You're leaving an incredible legacy. You're bringing what back to the basic. You're bringing family value, nutritional program for our youth, not only changing the generation right now, but changing the generation for the future. And I just want to say thank you very much for that.
Thanks, council member. Well, repetitive at this point, but I will also thank Councilwoman Davis and Supervisor Chavez for bringing forward this work and bringing Blue Zones to San Jose to do this assessment. It's quite a, for those who are up in the audience that are watching online, quite a robust assessment. I appreciate that it doesn't reinvent the wheel, that it's really aligned with the Children and Youth Services Master Plan and the work that we already do to support young people in the community and think about how to support families and growing healthy young people who can achieve their full potential in San Jose. I also think anything we do that takes a holistic view, better aligns what we're doing with the county, is a good thing, and trying to get upstream of things that we spent a lot of money on later, like homelessness and crime and blight and all the rest. So very supportive of where we're trying to go with this. I do think one of the lessons, actually, from everything I've learned about Blue Zones over the years is that so much comes down to culture. And so the question I have for staff is what we're hearing from community leaders. And I saw, one of the things I appreciate about the assessment is you actually named the names of people you interviewed and have pictures from the community meetings, which I think is really helpful. But to me, the success of this will be partly, do we get private and philanthropic entities to want to fund the work and have a multi-year view, but how bought-in are the community leaders? And are they ready to embrace and help lead the kind of cultural change, if you will, that the city needs? So I'd love to hear just a little more about how we're measuring or sort of validating the buy-in of community leaders as we move forward.
Yeah, Mayor, I think that's really kind of the big challenge and the opportunity, right? And this will only work if the community embraces this, right? This can't be an outside-in kind of approach, right? I think what's unique about this is that I think with, by leveraging Blue Zones, I think we're going to be able to attract other funders that we have historically not attracted into our community, so I think that's a big plus. But all this work, you know, if we do this work correctly, we'll leverage the work and the infrastructure that we put in place around the Children Youth Master Plan, right? And that is all community-based at all levels, children, youth, adults. And at the end of the day, they're going to have to kind of drive the agenda, they're going to have to drive the priorities. And the way we're approaching the two pilot launches is this work, they will have the ability to take a look at this report, identify the seven strategic strategies that they themselves identified through a robust community engagement process, and they themselves identified the priorities and recommendations that they want to advance. And then we'll be helping to seed that with some of our initial, you know, seed money that we're funding towards these, and with the goal being that they operationalize this into the culture of the neighborhood, right? At all levels. And we know that that's not an overnight thing, that's not a sprint, that's kind of a long game, but it starts with, you know, starting with a different vision of the culture and a different outcome. And that's what I think people have been really excited about, is I don't think we just need another program, right? I think what we need is, they want it to look and feel different, and that's why people are, I mean, we've had to cut off at some of our meetings because of space, we have to keep going to bigger locations, because, you know, we're getting RSVP list of 100-plus people, and we're like, "Well, we got to start expanding." So that's a good problem to have. So, yeah, bottom line, it has to be a community-driven strategy. The Children Youth Master Plan is structured in that way, and ultimately, they'll help define the performance metrics, and then we'll measure those.
Okay, sounds good. I appreciate all that. One follow-up, and then I know we've got a motion, a second, and I don't want to hold us up, because we have other important business this evening. I do want to note, so tonight we're being asked to accept the report and some next steps that make sense to me, I'll be supportive of that. As we continue the process, and I know there's a note I have around coming back to the council in the new year and as we lead into the budget process, talk about assigning staff resources to work, what is the, what are the validation points? What should we, just to kind of backwards plan from the success that we want to see, we come next spring and to talk about this, what should we expect to see in terms of community support, engagement? What tells us that there's real buy-in? Certainly, I'll be making phone calls and listening myself, I'm sure council members will, but I'm just curious, how do we know that there's kind of, how do we validate that there's sufficient bottom-up support and engagement and excitement that people are like, "Yes, we want to go do this"? Because, I mean, to me, that's what will make it exciting and successful and worth going out and raising the money and pushing it and committing to a five-year program, is if people are coming out of the woodwork saying, "We really want this."
I can only speak to this from my experience in other communities. We've got a little over 90 communities in the United States today. You all probably have heard or seen in the news Riverside County is actually launching a Blue Zones project right now. They have begun that process and have begun hiring their team. Actually, this week, they're doing their kickoff event, so they're in that foundation and planning phase. And where we are today is we're delivering a final, you know, rapport to get moving to that next stage. What I would anticipate, and probably what many of you are already experiencing, especially after today when we've made this public, Councilmember Davis, her team has done an excellent job of sharing this out very broadly, connecting with all of those community members that have participated in this, CYSMP, that have participated with us along the way. And they are continuing to get outreach to their offices to say, "When is this happening?" And you're going to probably see more of that. We've been very intentional about keeping the website up to date, giving them appropriate materials, and channeling them in the right direction, because what you will see and what happens in other communities is there will be kind of a growing demand where you will get calls, you will hear conversations, people will be asking. And so the work that generally happens from now until what you referenced, the spring, is that if we do our job right, Blue Zones in partnership with the city and county, as we will have said, can we bring the funding together? We will have those meaningful conversations with those private, nonprofit, philanthropic stakeholders. And if we are successful, we will then be able to say, "Do we actually have the demand?" We will know from the conversations that we are having, we will know from the leaders such as Angel and others that are engaging directly. Is this what they, if the community wants it, then we'll be ready to say, "Okay, we can move forward." But you do want to have demonstration of both of those points, and there'll be other opportunities to engage along the way and to ensure that that is shored up before you commit and move forward to the next phase.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, I think we have a vote to take. I don't see any other hands up. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you all very much. Okay, we are on to item 10.3. I believe we have a short staff presentation about a planned development program for a property located at 3464 Ambum Avenue. We'll wait for Chris and the team to get down to the box.
Chris Burton, Director of Planning/Building Code Enforcement, joined today by John Tu, our Division Manager for Development Review, and David Keon, our Principal Planner for Environmental Review. So the project, the project before you is a planned development rezoning, planned development permit, a tentative map with associated environmental impact report. Sorry, MND, my apologies. I knew that was coming, two projects. The zoning includes, as I said, a planned development rezoning that will allow the demolition of a single-family residence as well as associated accessory buildings, the removal of 23 ordinance-sized trees, and the construction of four two-story detached single-family residences on an approximately 2.6-acre gross site, as well as associated vesting tentative map for the subdivision. The property is located just here off of Ambum Avenue, and you'll see that it has a general plan designation of residential neighborhood and an existing zoning of R15 Single Family Residence. The proposed zoning does conform to the R15 zoning district, it just includes some limitations on setbacks because of the unique nature of the site. It's actually graded, there's a hill associated, so we were trying to work with the applicant to deliver the most efficient site plan. The project was reviewed for conformance with the general plan, as well as the objective standards contained within it regarding density and FAR, as well as the municipal code for zoning and tree removals, as well as the subdivision, and of course, with CCRAM. The environmental review is a mitigated negative declaration, which was circulated back in June of this year. We received four comment letters that were addressed by staff and formal responses to the comments back in August. The mitigated negative declaration found impacts related to biological resources, hazards and hazardous materials, as well as noise, with implementation of the identified mitigation measures included those in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. All identified impacts would be reduced to a less than significant level. So staff is recommending adoption of a resolution, adopting the residential subdivision project mitigated negative declaration, approving and ordinance rezoning the site from R15 to R15 PD, adopt a resolution approving subject to conditions, the associated vesting tentative map, as well as adopting a resolution approving subject to conditions, the associated planned development permit. And with that, staff's available for questions.
Thank you, Chris. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Not for this item.
Okay. And I should just note, because we have a lot of folks here, I suspect, for the next item, if you wish to speak, there are comment cards down at the, with these plastic or glass boxes, I think they're plastic, at the base of the staircase here. If you fill out a comment card and turn it in, put it in the box, then we'll know, we'll have a sense of how many people want to speak. But no public comment on this item.
On this item, none.
So we will come back to the council. We'll start with, I believe this is in Councilwoman Candelaus's district, so we'll start with the council member.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just start off thanking Chris and your team for the presentation. As you mentioned, the proposed development area is situated on a hill overlooking surrounding neighborhoods, and I have heard from some residents around concerns with the sightlines and privacy issues thereby created by the hill structure. So my question for you is, how many units could the site yield without this PD zoning and with the conditions of the site on the public street?
Yeah, John Tu, Division Manager. So with the SB 330 state provision, which would let them utilize the maximum development at the general plan designation, which is eight dwelling units to the acre, 21 units, however, when you net out a street, probably about 15 units is what they can theoretically design. You know, given some gradings, it might be a bit lower, but here they are, they're proposing. Not many.
Great, okay, thank you. So it's about 15 to 21, give or take, okay? And then, is the applicant here? Would the applicant come down? And I have a question for the applicant. Sorry, I should have warned you while I was talking to Chris. Got you closer to the mic. How you doing?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember.
I know that you met with a few of the neighbors to gather feedback before, you know, before coming here, correct?
Correct.
And so what were some of the comments that neighbors suggested from those meetings?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Ryan Doe, with Advocate with VM Capital. So we did meet with the neighbors and really what you just mentioned, the privacy issues. Certainly, we presented our projects as some that provides trees around the sites, the perimeter, but also around the lots to help address, provide screening and shading for that area. So that's what we tried to do to mitigate the concerns.
Gotcha. And so of the, okay, all right. And so how many meetings did we have with the community?
There was a phone call, and then there's a virtual meeting, so two conversations.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Ryan. That's all for now. And so, you know, like I mentioned, I heard from neighbors, I actually went door-to-door to every home surrounding the project, and, you know, my goal was to, you know, bring the applicant and a few of the neighbors to come up with something to bring additional mitigations. And, you know, I am somewhat disappointed. While I understand the applicant's responsibility to maximize the opportunity to produce a product that sells, which is what we talked about with the additional balconies overlooking, that appears, you know, four balconies appear to be excessive, and so, you know, while we aim to facilitate development in San Jose, you know, I think that balance of, you know, the residents' quality of life is tough, and I know some folks were really disappointed. But alas, you know, that's why I'm grateful for my colleagues who worked together on the memorandum that we put forth, that looked to establish additional conditions with regards to the issue we mentioned, requiring to modify the landscape plan to include better shading and screening, and more importantly, the condition to minimize the loss of neighborhood privacy by strategically placing shading and screen foliage for the surrounding neighborhoods. And I think with these additional conditions, I think we sought to address those privacy concerns. And so with that, I'd like to move the memo authored by my colleagues and I.
Thanks, council member. Councilwoman Ortiz, you get?
No.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilor Ortiz, you get, or did you?
No, I was going to say second.
Okay. All right. Got it. Thanks, Councilor. Appreciate your work on this. Any other questions or comments from colleagues? I'm not seeing any. Okay, Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes nine zero with Davis absent.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. All right. Thank you to staff. So we are on to item 10.4, which is the conditional use permit to allow construction of a new commercial retail building at 5287 Prospect Road. We have a couple of recusals, so I want to start with those. Councilmember Foley, and then I'll go to Councilor Batra.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to recuse myself due to a financial conflict.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilor Batra.
I have a conflict of interest, as I own some of the shares for this Costco company.
Okay, great. So Councilmembers Foley and Batra will leave the chamber. We will still have a quorum. We'll be able to make a decision this evening, which is good news. Tony, just before, and I will get into a few, since we have a large group here, I'll lay a couple of ground rules. But just before I do that, and I'll kind of lay out the sequencing here, how many comment cards do we have at this point?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Okay. That's a lot. So what we will do process-wise is we'll hear the staff presentation. The applicant is then given five minutes to present. We then go to public comment. Given the very high volume of cards, we will not be able to do the full two minutes. I know many of you reached out requesting to have time to make your case. I'm going to start by limiting to a minute and a half and see how we do. I understand you all are here in an evening. You put a lot of time and effort into be here, so I do want to try to give everybody an opportunity to be heard. I also need to keep quorum and make sure we hear from everyone in the chamber. If we're running, starting to lose people, I may further reduce it, but I'm going to start at 90 seconds. After that, we'll come back to the council for deliberation and a motion. So we'll start with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted, this is a conditional use permit for the Westgate West Center for the proposed Costco project. So here you'll see the project location on the corner of Lawrence Expressway and Prospect Road. The site has a general plan designation of neighborhood community commercial and an existing zoning of commercial general. The project includes the demolition of existing three single-story commercial buildings that total a little under 190,000 square feet, the removal of 115 trees, 73 which are ordinance, 40 to a non-ordinance size, and proposes 198 replacement trees, and will include the construction of 165,000 square foot Costco building. This is a conditional use permit that includes the new construction, but also includes the determination of public convenience and necessity, which needs to be heard by city council in conjunction with the Type 21 ABC license for off-sale of alcohol. The project also includes Saturday construction hours from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM and five 24-hour concrete pours. The project was reviewed for conformance with the 2040 general plan, as well as the municipal code, the citywide design standards and guidelines, as well as Council Policy 6-30, public outreach, and with the California Environmental Quality Act. For environmental review, a notice of preparation went out back in January of 2022. We held an environmental scoping meeting that month. The draft environmental impact report was circulated back in December of last year. And then the final environmental impact report containing the First Amendment, the draft EIR, and the MMRP was completed on September 13th of this year. Impacts from the project can be mitigated to a less than significant level with implementation of mitigation measures. These include air quality during construction, nesting birds, hazard and hazardous materials from past users on the site, and construction-related noise. The environmental impact report did not identify any significant or unavoidable impacts. We did study project alternatives. They included a no-project alternative, as well as three other alternatives. Beyond the no-project alternative, the alternate placement on-site would be the environmentally superior option because it did reduce noise and vibration impact for residents located on the east side of the project. However, this alternative would not fully realize the project objectives and would result in similar impacts for the other resource areas to the proposed project. In response to the circulation, staff received 387 written comment letters during public circulation, and these raised concerns relative to site access, pedestrian safety, traffic and parking, perceived incompatibility with the urban village goals, alcohol sales, air quality, and hazardous materials. All comments were addressed in the First Amendment, and none of these comments identified substantive inadequacies in the draft environmental impact report. Recirculation of the EIR is therefore not required. And so lastly, staff is recommending adoption of a resolution certifying the Westgate West Costco EIR, as well as adopting a resolution approving subject to conditions, a conditional use permit to allow the demolition of said buildings and the construction of the new Costco building. Staff has one additional condition that, following further discussions, will be adding, and so I'm going to hand it over to John to talk through that.
Yeah. John Two, Division Manager. Based on public comments received prior to this hearing about propane cells, staff has an additional condition to add to the resolution. A prohibition of the cell and refilling of propane does align with what was analyzed in the EIR, which was expressly stated that propane would not be sold at the site. This line should be added to below condition number 7F in the Youth Authorization Section of the Conditional Use Permit Resolution. The condition will read as follow. 7G propane cells and refilling, the cells of propane and propane refilling is prohibited.
And with that, staff's available for additional questions.
Okay. Thank you for the staff report and recommendation. We're going to now turn to the applicant. And the applicant, once you get started, will have five minutes.
Wait, we're having, you're back. We were having an audio issue for the broadcast, but it's back, so don't worry about it.
Okay. Thank you, Tony.
Good evening, Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Kamai, and the San Jose City Council. I want to first thank you for allowing us to present the proposed Costco at the Westgate West Mall tonight. My name's Michael Akuma. I'm the AVP of Real Estate Development for Costco Wholesale. San Jose has been home for us for over 30 years with five successful warehouses in the city. We have strong roots in the community, and our membership has grown along with the successful growth of the city of San Jose. For years, our members have been asking for a new warehouse in West San Jose. We're excited to have found a home here at the Westgate West Mall. As you have heard, many of the neighbors have significant concerns about the location. We've listened and made changes to make the project better. Working with the landlord, we're creating a new revitalized mall that will improve pedestrian and bike safety along Lawrence Expressway. We are contributing 2.5 million toward pedestrian safety at the intersection of Lawrence and Prospect. This location is convenient to where our members live, as you can see from the graphic above, and which we believe will help reduce travel across town to the other existing warehouses. This project will not have a fuel station, but it will be creating over 250 to 300 new jobs, paying an average of $29 an hour. The city's own Office of Economic Development estimates that approximately over $2 million of annual sales tax will be generated from a big box, just like Costco. We have spent significant time with the community and stakeholders over the past three years, including participating in nearly 40 meetings with neighbors, the high school district, adjacent medical office owners, shopping center tenants, and Costco members. We have currently received over 3,000 community letters of support, of which over 450 support letters from District One has expressed their support, and will provide that to the city clerk. We have listened and learned. The project before you this evening is responsive to the community concerns and achieves Costco's objective, as noted on the slide above. As proposed on the site plan, some highlighted modifications along Graves on the west side at the cul-de-sac, that driveway, that existing driveway is going to close. No Costco delivery trucks will be on, will come through Graves. We are closing the eastern Graves driveway at night to all truck traffic, actually closed at all at night. Related to traffic, the project design eliminates all existing loading docks that currently exist, about 10 of them, that faces the residences. The Costco loading dock itself, noted in yellow, is facing south. It's a little bit different than our prototype. It'll have a wall and a wall on the side and a roof on top to help muffle the sounds. We're also adding a six-foot-tall screen wall along Graves and shifting the building to a line. Pedestrian safety, we've agreed to contribute 2.5 million to address the existing pedestrian and bike safety. We're improving pedestrian path at Graves, from Graves to Prospect along Lawrence, improving the Lawrence driveway intersection. And I want to also thank you, Vice Mayor, for coordinating the effort to identify the set of improvements to increase pedestrian safety and help minimize the distance for crossing. To summarize the project benefits, we're revitalizing an existing shopping center. We're reducing truck traffic on Graves over the prior condition, which was over 18 trucks, to less than six, eliminating the existing 10 loading dock doors that faces the residence right now, improve pedestrian and bike safety along Lawrence, increase tax revenue by city's estimates by 2 million, promote economic growth by 203 to 300 well-paying jobs. So tonight, I respectfully ask that you support the memo from the mayor, vice mayor, councilors Codelis and Cohen. Along with me tonight is our landlord representative, Henry Avila, from First Washington, and consultants, if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We're going to now shift to public comment. One thing I failed to mention is just that in the interest of allowing our clerk to do her job and everyone to exercise their free speech rights, we do ask people to not cheer or boo or otherwise disrupt the meeting. People will frequently use jazz hands if they want to show support. You can shake your head no, whatever silently you choose to do. But we want to just keep things moving along because we do have a lot of speakers, and we want to hear from everyone. Tony, let's jump in.
Yes. So I'm going to call your name. You can also, if you didn't hear me, the names will show up on the transcript as well. I'm going to call the first three or four speakers, no particular order, first person on the microphone, just, you know, start talking. Everybody else can sit in this front row where it says reserved while you wait your turn. So let's start with Joe Glynn, Leah Tennisketter, Robin Marrow, and Eileen. And I'll call a fifth person. I also have Gary. Come on down.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Joe Glynn. I'm a 25-year resident of District One, a longtime resident of the city of San Jose. Vice Mayor Kamai, as the new council member in January 23rd, you gave me the opportunity to sit in front of you and talk about issues in our neighborhoods. And this project was active, and we spoke about it. And you listened. And I'm here to give you and Mayor Mahan, Councilmember Cohen, and Candelis my support for this project because these recommendations were some of the areas that we spoke about, public safety, particularly pedestrian safety with our children at that intersection. This will provide public infrastructure that's desperately needed as we transform this area to an urban village concept. Paseo de Sertoga is right behind it. This gives the impetus to get those improvements done and funded. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Your no vote on the Westgate West Costco project is a vote to protect San Jose, protect student and resident safety, protect our roadways, existing businesses, protect our residents from noise, light, and air pollution. This is not the time for a yes vote. Traffic and safety studies around the proposed site are still lacking. A yes vote now for the project would be based on insufficient analysis, especially for the cut-through streets that border Country Lane Elementary School. That study was not done because it was not required. How has the bare minimum become the standard? How can you rubber stamp this project when you do not, you do not have a complete understanding of the traffic, safety, and health risks your vote would impose on the community? Please do not trifle with people's lives and safety. If you must vote yes, do your homework. Get the full picture. Complete all of the relevant analyses, whether or not they are required. Then commit substantive mitigations that meaningfully address the problems and guarantee those in writing. That's how you tell your constituents that you hear them and you have their back. Finally, push Costco to be the good neighbor they profess to be and challenge them to put some real skin in the game. I urge you to use this moment to protect our city's goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Mark Barbaris and Amy. Go ahead.
The Kimbley Horn noise analysis does not mention shopping carts anywhere in their document. Costco parking lots swarm with vehicle and shopping cart traffic in their parking lots. The study whitewashes the parking noise issue by saying parking noise events would be instantaneous and short-term in duration. At Costco, I've never had an instantaneous or short-term trip pushing a shopping cart back to my car. The questions we all need to ask are, was shopping cart noise included in the noise analysis? It is not called out in any way. If it was, how was it modeled? Were there sound levels of carts crossing the ADA truncated dome pads modeled? Those pads increase the noise exponentially. Will solar panels reflect sound down into the neighborhood? Has this been studied? What type of carts will be used, metal or plastic? Any noise analysis is incomplete and deficient without accounting for shopping cart noise and needs to be redone. Please require a thorough, accurate noise analysis and require appropriate sound mitigation for this untested, first-of-its-kind, with-roof-parking, community-disrupting design. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Leah Tennisketter, President and CEO of the San Jose Chamber of Commerce. Our role as the chamber is to serve as an advocate for the needs of the local business community and the economic growth of our city. I am here to express the chamber's strong support for the proposed Costco warehouse. This project aligns not only with the mission of enhancing economic opportunities, but revitalizing key commercial locations. A couple of specific notes that we pulled out. One, the project is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning code. This is the direction that the city took. When a project aligns, we should maintain that alignment. It strengthens San Jose's retail tax base. As was mentioned, an estimated $2 million in annual sales tax is beneficial to our city, creating 250 to 300 well-paying jobs with career opportunities, again, is a positive for our workforce. And lastly, And lastly, Costco has shown to be a partner over three years of conversation, design changes, and contributing two-and-a-half million dollars to additional traffic needs. They are showing to show up. If existing shopping centers like Westgate West cannot add new retail to remain competitive, it does pose a significant economic challenge for us in San Jose. Costco represents a positive transformation of that shop.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker. I'm also going to call Mabon and Joss Jiang.
My name is Robin Marrow. I represent CW Strong Restaurants. We operate Dave's Hot Chicken in the San Jose Market in East Bay. I have Dave's Hot Chicken in the same Westgate Shopping Mall where the proposed Costco will be going, and we are in strong support of Costco joining us. We believe that having any empty spaces in a business district is not good for the city, it's not good for the community and its residents, it creates all sorts of hazards and potential crime, and just having a thriving business community where it's a safe place for families to come and to shop and to spend time and to dine will only, I think, add more value to the area. I understand that there are resident concerns, and I think this is the right forum to address those, and it sounds like Costco's done a good job trying to mitigate all of those concerns. So I think it will be a very positive addition to that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Mark Barbaris. I just grabbed a copy of the Mercury News tomorrow's edition, great article in it, I read. In a reversal from the Planning Commission decision, the city council blocked Costco development directly across from a high school. This location would have been the first Costco in the nation with parking on the roof, a sign of too small a site, something reserved for South Korea. It had an entrance through a quiet neighborhood and all-night loading operation feet away from residents. The council stated that sequel rules, although fulfilled, did not reflect the needs of the community. In addition, the touted two-million revenue number was found to be grossly inflated as the baseline was taken after existing tenants were expelled from the site, and it did not consider predictable cuts and closures at local businesses such as Sprouts, Trader Joe's, and Bevan Moore. Having protected the neighborhood, council members can now sleep well at night along with residents on Graves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'll also call down Paul Wilcox and Dongling.
So I'm in East San Jose Negative. I'm a current Country Lane Elementary parent. I'm also an educator, and we have one important rule: Never hurt children. You never put them in harm's way. So why would anyone want to put a car magnet warehouse right next to two schools? So I made this map because there's no study done on the Country Lane neighborhood, and as you can see, Country Lane already lacks some safety measures, and a Costco makes five-to-ten-year-olds even more vulnerable to vehicular violence. Closing Graves Avenue at night doesn't help those kids. So the kids aren't here tonight, and they have no voice. I protect and care for other people's children as part of my job. I don't know how to explain to you that their lives and safety are always more important than money. It would be so disappointing to see council members lose your humanity, your ethics, and your legacy over a business. So voting no is not easy, but it's obviously the right thing to do.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Joss Jiang. I urge you vote no on the project because if you don't, please ask Costco to close the eastern entrance on Graves Avenue. Why? Because this project can create one million extra traffic to this area. The traffic is going to flow, they can congest already busy Sartoga, Prospect, and Lawrence Street. So if the council members cannot find a way to get there, they can find the east entrance and flooding into all the nearby streets. And you think about the elementary school there, so you think about the kids, they're risked, they're safety endangered. So please put a human on behalf of the commercial, protect our kids, vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Mabon, and I'm a junior at Prospect High School. I'm skipping soccer practice to be here today and am speaking on behalf of lots of my friends who couldn't make it due to sports matches and academic club meetings. Some of you may think that thousands of extra cars from Costco won't increase safety problems around my school, but in my experience, they will. Most days, I ride to and from school in a car, but because the traffic is so bad on Prospect Road, many of my friends and I drive through the other neighborhoods to get dropped off and picked up at the back of the school. Riding to and from Prospect High School for school, sports practice, or band events, there's often lots of traffic that we crawl through light after light. At these times, it's pretty common to see drivers block bicycle lanes, make illegal U-turns, run red lights, and make other poor decisions. The school track and field are located right next to the traffic flow, and as a member of multiple sports teams, I know firsthand that athletes have to deal with the air pollution and noise during practices. If Costco is built across from our school, most students will not be able to eat and buy things there, but will all have to deal with the increased pollution, traffic, and safety problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Emily Ding and Crystal and Kyle. So that's Emily, Crystal, and Kyle. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Paul Wilcox. I'm a thirteen-year resident of one of the neighborhoods abutting the Costco proposal. I'd like to urge you to reject this. I'd like to make a common sense argument. Compared to the nearby Sunnyvale Costco, which is a pretty typical Costco, this project is about twenty thousand square feet larger on a lot that's about thirty-five percent We've all been to a Costco on a weekend, and we all know how wild it gets. This project doesn't make any changes to Prospect Boulevard or to Lawrence Expressway. You've been on Lawrence, that turn-in to this lot can take eight or ten cars. You haven't seen only eight people going to a Costco. I've heard our neighborhood associations be accused of being nimby's, and I've spoken to a lot of the folks that are here, and I can assure you, we're not. We want this mall to thrive. It's thrived in the past, and it can thrive in the future. It just needs the right businesses that are the right size. We need markets, we need restaurants, we need coffee shops, we need clothing stores. We don't need a giant box mall shoved into a tiny neighborhood mall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I agree with all of them, say no to this project. It is too close to the high school and elementary school here. So in the Costco, the plan, the new driveway, if you see that, will be opening up by removing the sidewalk between the Trader Joe's and the previous semifinal for the customer to enter and exit the Costco side from the Graves Avenue. This will create cut-through traffic around the Country Lane Elementary School and nearby street to the north. This means much more traffic and danger to the kids walking and biking to the very close-by Country Lane School. So I strongly to ask you to consider this request before you make this final decision.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Kyle. I'm a junior at Prospect High School. When I'm biking to school, there are often like car, there's a lot of cars, and often there are like cars that are partially in the sidewalk when the light turn or the crossing sign turns green. So also, when school is getting out, there's often a lot of cars like around the area and a lot of people trying to leave at the same time. Costco is only going to make the traffic worse, and I don't want like other people to get hurt because of the large amount of traffic in the area. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, there's a second photo as well.
Hi, I'm a thirteen-year resident of the community. A no vote is a vote for safety. Because no traffic safety was, study was required, none was conducted. It's common sense that more traffic equals more accidents. Now, you have seen that they are proposing to do some changes. I didn't know I could do a slide, which would be just around the Costco. However, there are no safety updates that have been proposed for all of the communities where that traffic is going to flow through all of our neighborhoods. If San Jose is serious about a vision zero and reducing accidents, then you should vote no. And if you are going to vote yes, then please require, ask for more mitigation to protect the safety of the residents, or you're just setting us all up for accidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. But before you go, I'd like to call down Hannah Konazawa, Kurt Ma, Tammy, and Gary Smith. Go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Emily, and I've lived in the Country Lane neighborhood all twenty-five years of my life, just steps away from the proposed Costco site. This project contradicts San Jose's vision for its neighborhoods. Instead of a transit-oriented, pedestrian-friendly urban village, we face a big-box warehouse generating massive traffic congestion. And with multiple Costcos within six miles in suitable commercial areas, do we really need another in a residential neighborhood? If you can't oppose this project outright, at the very least, please close all public-access driveways from Graves Avenue during all hours to protect our beloved residential streets and schools. We need solutions that align with San Jose's envisioned 2040 plan and urban village goals. Please make your decision as if you two live in this neighborhood. Please prioritize our community's safety and livability over this ill-fitted development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kurt Ma, and I'm a neighborhood resident. Although I do not support the Costco project, I was happy to hear some dialogue at the Planning Commission meeting on September twenty-fifth that spoke to addressing cut-through traffic, which is a big concern of ours, through the neighborhood that might result from the Costco build. Lynette Diaz from Costco said, quote, "To be overly cautious, we are rec, or we are committed to taking cut-through traffic counts through the neighborhood now and after the store opens. And a year from there, and if there are issues, we've committed to addressing those." So that came from Lynette from Costco. And then Manjeet Benwheat from the Department of Public Works chimed in and referenced Council Policy Five-Dash-Six, and she said that based on the post-studies, if the traffic volumes and speeds exceed our policy, then we can use the $50,000 contribution that was mentioned and use it towards traffic calming measures in the neighborhood. I feel this is a positive step in developing better relations from Costco and the city with the neighborhood. So to the council, if you are going to approve the Costco plan, I do request that the traffic study and possible mitigations be a condition for approval, and there be a documented plan of record to ensure that these follow-up actions are committed by Costco, Public Works, and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Tammy Cook. My daughter went to Country Lane Elementary. She's currently at Moreland Middle School, soon to go to Prospect High School. I am on the Moreland Middle Home and School Club Board. My concern is student safety. Country Lane Elementary sits between Terracida and Britton. I live on Terracida. Cut-through traffic on these two streets will put kids in grave danger of being hit when walking home, and these small children cannot be seen over the hood of the big SUVs that are going to cut through our neighborhood getting to Costco. And I do see cut-through traffic now. Hundreds of Prospect High School students cross the dangerous Prospect-Lawrence intersection daily. Additionally, Moreland Middle and Country Lane students also cross this to get to their homes in the English Estates neighborhood. The left-turn pockets surrounding Costco will all exceed storage capacity, yet nothing is being done about it. Angry drivers will run red lights, and it's only a matter of time before a student is hit severely injured or worse. Costco does not belong at this location. An urban village development will serve the area better and bring in revenue for the city, and most importantly, keep our students safe. Please vote no. Thank you, and thank you for the minute and a half.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Ben, Lydia, and Austin. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Konazawa, and I have lived in San Jose and been a longtime resident for the last twenty-five years, and I was married in San Jose, I had children in San Jose, and raised them through the San Jose Public Schools. My neighborhood, and I want to describe that because that might shed a little bit information and light, are those of Saratoga, Cupertino, Campbell, and Santa Clara. My school-aged children often had friends in every one of those cities because we are on the edge of San Jose. And as you can understand, this proposal is right on the corner of that fingered border, and as a longtime edge-of-San-Jose resident, I have felt that oftentimes, unless there's money involved, we get sort of neglected and we get ignored. And I don't want to see this Costco giant proposal overlook all the impact it has in our community. Tonight, you guys unanimously voted towards the Blue Project, and that, to me, gives me a sign of hope that you really believe in equity. Costco is a membership-based company. There's no equity in that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Gary Smith. I'm a resident of West San Jose. I oppose the, I oppose the proposed Costco warehouse.
If you'd just lift your mic a little. There you go.
I oppose the proposed Costco in Westgate West. Ninety-six new pole-top LED light fixtures and seventy-six ground-level LED light fixtures is not progress for the city of San Jose or neighboring cities. Light pollution will be generated from artificial LED light sources. Light pollution travels up to a hundred-twenty miles from a major light source. Before voting on this project, consider the impact of light pollution will add to the current challenge at Lick Observatory on Mount Hamilton. A recent SF Gate news article with date of July sixteen, twenty-twenty-four states, "Two years ago, Lick was ranked among the top three most light-pollutant astronomical sites. It's now the worst." Data from the observatory shows light pollution proliferation rate of seven to ten percent a year. Within a decade, Lick Observatory's astronomers won't be able to see the stars in the sky, and the scientist quoted says, "We need people to understand the consequences, to be aware that this is a massive issue, and part of that is by educating them on the work that we do at Lick Observatory." San Jose has a history of wanting to protect the night sky, so let's do that. Let's vote no. Costco's twenty-four, Title XXIV lighting is not in compliance.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, councilmen, mayor-
Good evening, council members. My name is Ben and I'm a senior at Prospect High School. And I have walked, driven, as well as run cross-country in the area for many years. Many of my peers have been concerned about the changes that will negatively affect us as students if Costco were to go in. However, we feel that no one has really ever listened to our safety concerns about Costco, a store students can't even shop at without a membership. It doesn't matter how well you follow rules and laws. With increased cars, more accidents will happen. As a pedestrian myself, I've narrowly been hit even with following safety precautions. I find it ironic that many of you are likely not for large corporations or businesses unless, of course, it benefits you. I will never forget when I vote going forward that the city of San Jose's leadership is not for the little guy but rather big businesses. Your unwillingness to offer meaningful mitigation strategies that the local community has been asking for says all I need to know. Our safety and well-being should be more important than making money at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Sarah Ludwig and Becky.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lydia and I'm a junior at Prospect. So I love to bike. It's one of the best parts of my day, seeing my other friends on their bikes and just like getting exercise and stuff. But especially when we're leaving school, it can get really scary because there's a lot of cars. There's parents who just want to get back to work. There's students who maybe shouldn't be driving yet. And there are a lot of illegal maneuvers. People do U-turns they're not supposed to. People literally park in the bike lane waiting to pick up their kids or try to weave through traffic. And it's really scary because I'm, I've almost gotten hit. And I have a lot of friends who have almost gotten hit. Pretty much anyone who bikes to school has almost gotten hit. And if you're going to add eleven thousand more car trips, that's not, that number's not going to go down. More people are going to get injured, more people are going to get hurt. And that's just, that's not good for anyone. And I just want to feel safe biking to school and I want all my other students to be safe too. So I hope that if this Costco does end up coming here, that you guys find a way to keep us safe, whether that be a crossing guard or other measures, just to make sure that no one's getting hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, council members. My name is Austin and I'm a current student at Prospect High School. A driver, a biker, and as of one week ago, an eligible voter. I urge you to consider the safety of Prospect students. Every day I walk, I watch student drivers hastily fly out of Prospect while other students absent-mindedly weave through the cars of distracted drivers. And adding an additional eleven thousand cars a day is nothing but a recipe for tragedy in an already hazardous area. Bottom line, council members, who do you, our elected officials, represent? The people, the community, the students, or the money? Commissioners, I urge you to vote no on this Costco warehouse proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call Kim and Fred.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Ben. I'm the father of a young Country Lane Elementary School student. And I, twice a day, I take my life in my hands to cross Graves Avenue with them to get to school. I'm here to ask you to not approve this project as it stands, or if it is inevitable, to not approve without implementing more serious safety measures. Under no illusion that this is ultimately about anything other than money. You guys have to weigh the cost of potential tax revenues and lawsuits against the costs of wrongful death and injury lawsuits resulting from the dangerous conditions on Graves Avenue that this project will bring. If this project proceeds as proposed, I fear there are going to be speed bumps on the ominously named Graves Avenue, one way or another. And so I'm urging you to ensure that these are intentional speed bumps that have been planned by this council along with other traffic control measures and not speed bumps from children who are just trying to get to school. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Sarah. I'm a parent of four children, all four of which have attended Country Lane Elementary and all who have or will attend Prospect High School. In my daughter's AP Government class last year, the question was posed, what is the primary goal of elected officials? The answer, to get re-elected and further political aspirations. I bring this up because as a local community, we do not feel heard by our officials. And the limited concessions touted by the city and Costco do not move the needle. All Graves Avenue exits from the site need to be closed during Costco business hours. This street will never be able to safely handle the cars that will be dumped from Costco. Living six homes away from Graves and having walked for over twelve years with my four kids to Country Lane Elementary, I can tell you, you are putting lives at risk. If you are unwilling to close both entrances, you need to consider mitigation strategies that discourage use. Add speed bumps to the backside of Costco. Add stop signs along Graves, raised crosswalks, real-time speed signs, and remove that gigantic Costco sign on the eastern end of the building encouraging customers to use Graves. Prove to us you will put the safety of the people you represent before money. And listen to what we have been asking for. You represent us, not Costco. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Becky and I have two kids at Prospect High School. I urge you to vote no on this proposal. After hearing our concerns, the city did conduct an additional traffic assessment to cover school dismissal. Unfortunately, that was conducted at the wrong time. Why is this important? At the Planning Commission meeting, one of the commissioners said that people always talk about people dying. But that doesn't happen. Last week, one of my daughter's oldest friends, a former San Jose resident and a senior in high school, was killed in a car accident while she was driving to school. You cannot add eleven thousand car trips a day to an already congested area and say that you won't see an increase in accidents and fatalities. It would be negligent to pass this proposal without, without a proper study and assessment of traffic. Please, please consider our children's safety and vote no on Costco.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call Jennifer and Amy.
Hello, mayor, council people. My name is Kim and I live at Ground Zero. That means I live right at Graves Avenue and Cameo Drive, right next to a Costco. Costco, I believe, is not the right place for this location. And I guess I would ask all of you, if any of you have children and you would put them at the risk that you are putting the children at West Valley. We are concerned about our neighborhood because we feel you are not. We are concerned about the safety of our kids, residents, about the four million cars that will be coming into our neighborhood every year, about the pollution, the construction debris and the noise, about the serious health dangers to compromised residents, and your level of concern that will be obvious if you choose to approve this project. We challenge you to think about your decision. Here's a guide on the screen to help you look at that. If you decide to vote yes on this and there's no other location and no other point in time, you can see what the issues are that you will have to deal with. Close Graves Avenue, improve pedestrian crossings, provide better vehicle pickup and drop-off for students. These-
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Fred and I've been living in this neighborhood for sixty-three years. I voted for you, Mr. Mayor, and I voted for you, Rosemary. I expect you to represent our interests, not Costco. We have given you all the reason why this is not the right location for Costco. You're ignoring it. That is wishy-washy answer that Costco is given to remedy the problem that exists in that area. I'll give you an example. Right now, the Smartam Final setting is about seventy yards away from our house. You are bringing it right next to Graves Avenue and going three stories up as a parking lot? Why aren't you listening to what people are saying? You're going to create a problem that you'll never be able to correct it. The traffic over there already is too much. I live there. The entrance on Graves for Costco is outside my bedroom. Please consider the reality-
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer. I'm a longtime resident of this neighborhood. With respect to council members Kamai, Cohen, Candellis and Mayor Mahan, I know you're recommending approval of this project based on certain conditions. And I, you know, from what I hear tonight, Costco is saying they're willing to accommodate some of these conditions. But who is actually going to ensure that these conditions are met? My understanding is that a lot of these conditions are voluntary and unenforceable if they just change their mind later and decide not to move forward with them. So how is that protecting the West Valley neighborhood if you can't enforce the conditions that you're basing your approval on? Unless these conditions can be guaranteed, then our safety and neighborhood will, our, our safety and neighborhood well-being will be in jeopardy. My father, right behind me, was hit by a car turning into the shopping center. And he suffered severe injuries and thankfully, he's okay. But next time, he may not be okay. And I fear that adding eleven thousand more car trips will put him in jeopardy, the students, the local schools in jeopardy, and the neighborhood in jeopardy. Please vote no, thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call Susan Kaufman, Frank, Connie and Ron. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Frank and I, it's not the first time I've talked to the city council. It's been many years ago. But I frankly have a question, frankly speaking, of you, councilmen and Mayor Mahan and especially Rosemary Kamai from our district. I'd like to see a show of hands that if this Costco is going within a block of your home, if you would vote for it. I don't see too many hands going up there, huh? Some people think it's a little bit funny, but it's not funny for the reasons you've listened to these folks today. And my, my daughter just said, you know, I got run over by a car on my bike and I wouldn't be, wouldn't be able to walk for about three months. But if you would go inside yourself before you do your official vote and you wouldn't put your hand up, I noticed when I asked if this Costco was going next to your home, then think about that when you do vote tonight, okay?
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, there are many reasons that a Costco warehouse does not make sense at this location and would be detrimental to the community. But I'd like to focus on Prospect Road. Transportation studies show that Costco would adversely affect traffic circulation in several areas, but especially along congested Prospect Road, which currently has three intersections rated LOSD or D+. Left turn lanes here are predicted to experience volume increases ranging between nineteen to ninety-nine percent and their left turn pockets already have queues beyond capacity. The biggest concern, however, is this. Costco can't get customers in and out of its main entrance in an acceptable and safe fashion. Transportation data show the Prospect Road entrance would have the greatest vehicle loads by far. While Costco shoppers can enter the site, the driveway here is insufficient to get them out of the site in peak traffic. The queue to exit at the main driveway is predicted to back up by several hundred feet due to a ninety-nine percent increase in traffic turning left. But traffic turning right is predicted to increase by zero. Why is this? Because the driveway and the intersection can't handle the load. To fix the problem, the two-hour transportation analysis diverts all one hundred and thirty-five Costco cars through-
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Susan Kaufman. I'm a Green Drive homeowner for sixty-four years. I played at the Costco proposed site when it was still a plum orchard. My career has been as a county and a city land use planner. I'd like to start with a visualization. Imagine a hundred and sixty-five square foot Costco generating eleven thousand car trips per day and twenty-four-seven noise and air pollution and two years of horrible construction impacts proposed only one hundred feet from your peaceful and quiet cherished homes. What would you do? You wouldn't care about tax dollars. You would fight it tooth and nail. You would be in this line asking for the project to be denied. Please put yourself in our shoes. I like Costco, but this location across the street from our cherished homes and a school is inappropriate and totally incongruous with land use principles. It's the wrong location for such a project with huge impacts. If, if the only thing that you needed to consider was the zoning-
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call, I'd also like to call Julie Reynolds, Mark Polliger and Yuki.
The proposed Costco project is minimal, except for the size of its lot and its parking. Every Costco member knows that the best find at a Costco is a parking space. Unfortunately, this Costco just doesn't have enough of them. Compare this to the Sunnyville Costco and the Napa Costco that just opened. Both are smaller warehouses on much larger lots and have a hundred and fifty to three hundred more spaces than this one. Costco claims it is adding parking, yet it will reduce surface parking by a hundred spaces. With the majority of Costco's parking on the rooftop, the customers will take the path of least resistance and gobble up the surface spaces first. Nearby businesses have to share first come, first served parking with Costco members. With no protected parking, these businesses will lose customers who can't park nearby. Vote no on this project and protect businesses and residents from this forever mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. Where is the common sense? This is the wrong site and too small for a Costco. Looking at this site map, the yellow is the operations area, the X's are the homes and- neighborhood along Graves Avenue. Have any of you seen the operations area of a Costco? Well, take a look at some of these pictures and have a look. Costco claims to be a good neighbor, yet they want to put a nine-by-thirty-two-foot lit Costco sign right on Graves Avenue driveway, encouraging neighborhood cut-through traffic right by the Country Lane Elementary School. That driveway should be closed, the sign and Costco don't belong there. This proposed operation area is half the size at most Costcos. They don't have enough room. It's where all the dirty work, as you can see, is done. It's usually not seen because it's ugly. It's dirty, it's noisy, and now they want you to drive through it and us to live across from it. Closed Graves driveway use a wall like other locations to contain the sights, smells, and sounds of this dumping grounds. It's in full view of the public and neighborhood every day. And don't believe it if Costco tries to tell you the operations side of the warehouse won't look like these pictures, because they have no room inside to do all that dirty work. This project doesn't make sense. Please say no to Costco.
Greetings. My name is Julie Reynolds Grabby, and I am the current president of the Prospect High School Parent Teacher Student Association. I'm here to urge you to vote no on this warehouse proposal. It is unsafe for our students and our community as a whole. This location is absolutely inappropriate for a warehouse. Just look at my map, please, you guys. I don't know if you see that. Look where that is and look at all the things around it. It's less than fifty feet from the front yards of homes. It's close to several parks, across from senior centers, is seven hundred and seventy feet from Prospect High School, who has fifteen hundred students, and it's one thousand forty-nine feet from an elementary school. It proposes to bring four million extra car trips to this area every year, an area already plagued by congestion and frequent injury accidents. It's larger than a normal Costco, the site is one-third smaller, and it doesn't have even as much parking as Sunnyvale. It also doesn't fit the land use designation of neighborhood commercial. Sadly, the consultants haven't adequately addressed any substantive issues that we've been raising for the last three years until they were forced to by your memo. What does that tell you? We will, you will hear from the suits tonight that they've already done so much, but trust that is just...
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Dale Lavezzi, Livsey, I think it's Dale Livsey and Doris Livsey, and Dinah Sloan. Go ahead.
Council members, Mayor Mahan, this Costco is one of extremes. The largest Costco on the smallest area lot, the least amount of parking for the highest anticipated traffic, roads least equipped to handle that traffic, especially near schools, noise levels pushed right to the allowable limit, a decision that goes completely against San Jose's forward-looking plans for the future, and an overwhelming response of forty-six hundred petition signers against the project. Who pays the price for this? It's the families, the students, and the residents of West Valley. These are the people who will be stuck in traffic, dodging cars on their way to school, and coping with constant noise and congestion, all while being told this is good for the community. But let me ask you, is this good for the community? Is that the story that you want to tell? The corporate expansion and development deals that take priority over neighborhood safety, over the voices of residents who have been respectfully and passionately asking for a different outcome for years? Look, we recognize that all projects are about compromise, but there are some compromises that you just don't make. Voting yes on this project sends a clear message that San Jose's future belongs more to developers than to its own people. The tax dollars outweigh the safety of our students and the well-being of residents. You have a choice here. We're counting on you to stand up for our community. We urge you, say no to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen. My name is Yuki He. I'm a mom of two young children who are attending Country Lane Elementary. I live in the townhomes on Graves Avenue and serves on its HOA board. I strongly oppose to keep exit on Graves Avenue open for three reasons. First, the idea of exit that allows vehicle access but restrict pedestrian access is impractical. You need reality where vehicles can pass, pedestrian can pass too. Second, the added congestion is an unfair burden on local residents, as the photo shows that's already a long line of vehicles get during the school dismissal time to get out of Graves Avenue. My time, my drive to my daughter's after-school class will double in time. Third, I know over fifteen kids living in the townhomes cross Graves Avenue every day to Country Lane Elementary School. More traffic will put their lives at risk. I pledge the city to prioritize the safety of our children and close all Costco exit to Graves Avenue. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name's Dinah Sloan. I'm a twenty-nine-year resident of the Country Lane Elementary School area, and I'm here to urge you to vote no. As you've heard repeatedly, this intersection, this area, is not ready to handle the volume of traffic that will come with a Costco. I chose that neighborhood because it was pedestrian and bike-friendly. There are lots of people walking their kids to and from school, walking their families to the parks that are nearby. It's why I cherish the neighborhood I live in. Please protect my neighborhood. We all want that shopping center to thrive and do well, but Costco is not the right tenant. It is not the right business to put there for many, many years to come. We need appropriate businesses for the site and businesses where people will walk and bike. Nobody rides home from Costco on their bike with what they bought at Costco. Nobody walks home from Costco with their purchases. I urge you to vote no. If you can't vote no, at very least, protect those of us in the neighborhood beyond Graves by putting appropriate measures in place and not having access into Costco from Graves. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Sorry. Good evening. I grew up in this neighborhood. I'd like to refer to the council meeting memo dated October seventeenth from today's agenda, the conditional use permit recommendations for addressing the traffic concerns. Item 1H. This was signed by some of the members of the council here and the mayor. First of all, I appreciate your willingness to work with these compromises for neighbors' concerns. Thank you for that. However, I take issue with the fact that there are no clear penalties stated if the applicant doesn't adhere to the recommendations noted for resolving traffic issues within the noted two-year timeframe. Who's gonna enforce this, and how will it be enforced? What are the thresholds to determine if the improvements are needed? When and how will a study be conducted? Do you know? Will you be around to deal with this? I have served as a financial compliance director for some of the world's largest companies. It's been my experience that people don't tend to take action to fix problems unless there are penalties for not doing so. Please reevaluate pushing this through before fixing these enforcement gaps. On a broader note, all other local Costcos were built in commercial zones before residents moved to those areas. This is the first Costco to go into a neighborhood, community-zoned land use district in the Bay Area. Have you considered the precedent this will set for disrupting other districts in your city in the future? Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call Rupa N., Michelle Vernard...
Good evening, mayor and city council members.
Hold on, Doris. Michelle, Rupa, Tony LaBaron, and looks like Mark Knopf. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm Doris Livsey, a fifty-year resident of West San Jose. I want to start by saying I am a Costco member. I love Costco, but God forbid not in a residential neighborhood. We need something else there. Some of you sat here a couple of years ago and voted to impose El Paso into our residential neighborhood. And now, with no actual traffic statistics, because it hasn't been built yet, only data studies, Costco wants to impose itself into another neighborhood. All other area Costcos were built first in regional commercial districts, not neighborhood commercial, and then people chose to move in next to them. Isn't that how it should be? A store first, then the homes? Costco is a private membership store. It's not for everyone, but everyone will be impacted by traffic. Eleven thousand cars. As you vote, please remember the little girl who in the late nineteen-seventies was killed while crossing Prospect to go to high school. The light at Dial Drive was installed as a result. I shudder when I think of that when I'm stopped at the light at Lyle. A child was killed, that's why this light is here. With the significant volume of traffic that Costco will bring, will more of our children be killed? Please vote no. Find the tax money elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. My name is Michelle Vernard. I own BeCrum Yoga San Jose, and I support the Costco project. I've been in that mall, that precious mall, for twenty-two years. Our first studio, nine years there, was in the old Galactica Arcade, maybe some of you remember. Then we moved eight years into the Fencing Academy, and currently now where Dolce Bella and Genius Kids used to be. This gem of a location we deliberately picked, and sadly, when Orchard Supply closed, is when the vitality of that center started to go down. Yes, there was Starbucks and Super Duper, but the vacancies have been really large to the point now where these buildings are boarded up, and the area is shady, sketchy, dare I even say unsafe. Just to give you a little bit about our business, over the last twenty-two years, we've had over a million-two visitors. So I'm a big studio, and our growth potential now has gone down a lot. We used to get like two hundred new people every month. Now we're getting like fifty new people. The second and final point is, as long as I've been there, it's been a hodgepodge of different businesses. There's never been a sense of order with traffic, given all the traffic issues, which I agree. But for the first time with somebody seismic like Costco, the center's gonna have some sense of cohesiveness and better traffic.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call, I called Mark Knopf, but I think it's, it might be Merle. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tony LaBaron, and I'm in favor of the Costco project. I work for Michelle, and I've been a member of that studio for twenty years, and now I work there. I've watched that corner slowly die with most of the businesses leaving. It's really sad. And Michelle gave you some numbers. Our members have declined. I'd like to see Costco be approved and be back to that vibrant mall that it used to be. Please vote yes for the Costco project. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I might also like to call Mark Dobson and Shirley Pack. Go ahead.
Good evening. My first sentence would be, please vote no on Costco. As a resident of the Country Lane neighborhood, and I have those three schools, I think the traffic generated by, not I think, I know, the traffic generated by Costco is going to make it very, very unsafe. Country Lane has little kids. Most of us cannot see them. And as a Prospect mom, I worry for all the kids who do their sports, especially cross-country, who run. My kid does that, and now I have to be thinking about, is he going to be coming home or not? Yes, that mall can do with more businesses, but it should be multiple different small businesses, definitely not Costco. And talking about businesses, this is interesting because I did not grow up here, and this is my first introduction to will the elected officials really listen? So I'm urging you again, please do listen and keep the safety of the neighborhood the most important thing. Vote no on Costco. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'm gonna call the last three cards, too. I have Ramish, Steve, and Kevin.
I'm quite sure that by the end of this meeting, you will rubber stamp the recommendation by the planning commission. Because as a member of your planning commission stated, the project will generate revenue for the city. We have to approve. Yep, that's what he said. We have to approve. This is definitely the wrong location for a food warehouse, period. Projected a hundred thousand-plus increase in traffic. Oh my God, what are you thinking? Children attending schools nearby, Country Lane and Prospect, they walk this area. Increase in traffic will be challenging. Even now, our neighborhood is being short-cutted to get away from traffic. Five Costcos in San Jose? I believe the action to be a first invasion of a living area, active, quiet neighborhood with schools, parks, and families walking the streets. You know as well as I know, there is a much better location for a warehouse. Yeah, warehouse, that's what it is, in a community, especially when there are two other Costcos within a short drive of our area. We don't need them. I ask you, if you cannot vote, no on this project this evening.
Thank you, next speaker. Your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening, mayors and council members. My name is Shirley Pack. I worked at Westgate West Mall, and I strongly support the Costco project. I think Westgate Mall is a mall, and let it be a mall, and the reduced size Costco just fit where it is. And it can provide jobs for people, provide shopping convenience to the neighborhood, and revenue for the city. So I strongly support the Costco project. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
So here, you have heard a lot of speakers today talk about safety. The students have talked about safety. The parents have talked, the parents have talked about safety, and everyone's talked about safety. How do we evaluate safety? The one thing that we have to do is that we have to go back and look at data. Where is the data? Here is the data. When you look at the data within half a mile of Prospect School radius, you find that about ten percent of the collisions involve pedestrians and vehicles, right? And what is the duration under which these collisions occur? They occur between twelve PM to three PM and three PM to five PM. So these are the critical times for the collisions. However, what did the city of San Jose do? They did not evaluate this at all, completely. I put this in the DAIR comment, and I asked for a response. Guess what? There was no response at all. They completely chose to ignore it. This is an abject failure. How do we define safety, and how are you going to ensure safety? Switch, please. So the next set of things, here. In addition to this, let's look at this project. You have a land use violation over here. You're putting it in a neighborhood, community commercial. Parking, that's not adequate. Noise, you are at the threshold of fifty-five decibels. Homes, you are within hundred feet. School, you are within thousand feet. Traffic lane conditions, they are all at those. Now scroll.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you.
Ms. Kevin Cooney. I'm a twenty-year resident of San Jose, and I'm here to urge you to vote no. I have two kids that go to Prospect, they bike to school almost every day, and they bike home late in the evening multiple nights a week, as do a lot of their friends. There's been some talk about the buildings being boarded up and empty, and yes, that's a concern, but that's not due to a lack of interest. Multiple businesses have come to the owner asking to move in, including the Ace Hardware, and they were pushed away. Tenants that were there have left because rents were raised well beyond their means. As far as safety, according to the San Jose Police Department, in 2022, there were thirty-two pedestrian... in 2022, there were thirty-two pedestrian traffic fatalities in San Jose. That number has been increasing. The police department lists several key factors in causing traffic fatalities. I'd like to highlight a few for you. Number one, pedestrians crossing non-residential multi-lane roadways, like Prospect and Lawrence. Number two, inattention distraction, including cell phone use. Think about the last time you were in a Costco parking lot. Most drivers are not paying attention because they're trying to find a parking spot. Many high schoolers, not the ones here, I hope, are using their cell phones as they leave the school. The traffic assessment that was done later was done at three oh five PM, which is fifteen minutes after school dismissal. That does not actually represent what the traffic situation would be. You should redo that traffic assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Steve. I'm a strong supporter for Costco here. I live in the neighborhood, and I have always right next to the proposed site. I am a retired civil structure mechanical engineer with MBA. And I worked forty-five years as an engineer for public and private entities. I have reviewed a lot of environmental study reports. And I feel the restriction put on this project is way overboard. For example, I'd like to see we open up the entrance to Graves Avenue. That will allow the alleviation of traffic to be restricted to many other places. So I urge the council to approve this project as soon as possible. Thank you.
Back to council.
All right. Just before I turn to the vice mayor, let me just make a couple of points, and then I have, I'll probably chime in at least another time or two as we go around to other council members. First of all, I want to thank everybody who came out. I know it's a Tuesday evening. It's late. You all have a lot of other things you'd probably prefer to be doing. So I appreciate people taking the time to engage, and you're not just engaging tonight. I know you've been engaging very closely with the vice mayor's office, mine, and others, and been very active and involved for a long time. And I think that participation has made this project better. I went out last night and walked around the site, walked around the neighborhood by myself just to get a feel for it, saw signs in some of your front yards. And I know there are many genuine concerns that the neighborhood has. And I just, I want to make a general philosophic point, and then a much more technical point that's a response to something that was raised. And then I'll turn to the vice mayor. You know, on this question of land use approvals, this is the philosophic point. I will just say, I don't, I appreciate all the comments. I think there were a lot of good points raised, a lot of good questions and criticisms, very valid. I do not find it at all convincing or compelling to be accused of making decisions because of the money or because of some support for big business. That is not what has motivated any of us to run for office. I want to be clear about that. When we take up land use issues, they actually tend to be the hardest decisions we have to make as a council. Because we all run by knocking on your doors to represent the community, to do what's best for the community. The challenge with land use decisions is that they tend to always have broad dispersed, hard-to-measure benefits in terms of jobs, tax base that, yes, we use to hire police officers, maintain parks, expand library hours, pave roads, et cetera. The benefits tend to be housing. We need housing supply. The benefits tend to be diffuse. The impacts tend to be very acute, i.e. disproportionately borne by the very people who live right next to that site. That's why I went out to walk around your neighborhood last night. And we have to recognize that. That is the reality of investment in our city. And it's not to make an excuse. Some projects are good, some are bad. I'm not, I'm just making a philosophic point here. I want you to know, these are some of the hardest decisions we make. We weigh them, we think about them. We spend months on the big ones, diving into the data. We have professional staff who we rely on. Because of the very nature of, how much can we mitigate impacts and do what's right for the immediate neighbors of new jobs, new housing, new infrastructure, new homeless shelters, new schools, et cetera, on and on and on? How much can we help the community and minimize negative impacts, maximize benefits, while still allowing investment in our city that continues to create jobs and housing and things that overall, in the long run, the city really needs? So that's the context. This is not about the money. It's not about business versus the people, though I know it feels that way. And if some of you still walk away believing that, you're entitled to your opinion. But I want to be very clear. For me, and I think for all my colleagues, that's not what the discussion's about. It's about the fact that we have people who own land in the city, who have property rights. We have a need over time for things like jobs and housing. Yes, tax base is useful because we use it to pay for services. We also acknowledge, and the reason we spend so much time and study these things, we acknowledge that every time we add jobs and housing, there are impacts, particularly for the people who live right next to them. That's what makes this so hard. So that's why the memo we wrote has so many conditions. That gets to my narrower legal point that I just want to make because it was raised a couple of times. What accountability is there? Well, this is a conditional use permit. After being built, there will also have to be a certificate of occupancy. So these are legal entitlements we are giving to someone if they pass that come with certain obligations and some right to enforce. And so this is, I just want to be clear that it is a conditional use permit. And anyway, so there is a, there is a process here that this is not just a, okay, good luck. We wrote some nice things on paper. We hope you pay attention to us. I don't want you to think there is no leverage here. I want your neighborhood to be safe. I take your concerns very seriously. Living next to two major expressways and a very large commercial district is concerning. There are a lot of impacts from that. And we do need to weigh those. And frankly, I don't think the city, the county, or your transit, VTA, transit, have done a good enough job of thinking about throughput and traffic safety and all the rest. So I acknowledge that upfront. That is broader, though, than this very specific decision. So I just wanted to frame up this a little bit based on some of the comments I heard, many of which, by the way, most of which I thought were very substantive, very thoughtful. And again, I appreciate you all being so engaged and so well-informed. You asked a lot of good questions. Okay, I almost certainly have more to say. But I'm going to turn to my colleague in whose district this is. That's our vice mayor, Rosemary Kamay, who I know has been working very closely with many of you for a long time now, as well as the applicant, to try to make this as good of a project as it can possibly be. Vice mayor, you have the floor. In terms of colleagues, anyone on the dais can certainly call up the applicant to answer questions or others, community leaders. So you're always allowed, anyone here is allowed to ask someone to come to the podium to answer questions, not to extend public comment, just to be clear.
Thank you so much, Mayor Mahan. I really want to thank all of the speakers. I know you've taken time out of your valuable day to be here with us, to share your thoughts. I also want to thank two community members who weren't able to make it because I've spoken to so many over the last year, year and a half, as well as prior to my taking office. I want to thank West Valley, Save West Valley. I know you've done a lot of work. I've worked with you very closely. I particularly want to recognize Mark Polliger and Connie Tietze. You guys have been really, you know, opening my eyes. This is not a perfect process, but I certainly want to say how much I appreciate your perspectives and bringing the neighborhood perspective forward. I want to thank the multiple jurisdictions. This is a very complicated, challenging place because it's not just about this project. It's about, you know, dealing with the county roads, it's dealing with the school districts, it's dealing with city Saratoga. So it's not a simple area to begin with. So I want to thank all the city staff that have been involved in the project, the project presenters, and all that was brought, that has brought us here today. I would like to thank the mayor and my colleagues who signed on to the memo, which has been updated today. I did, in fact, add additional streets for review, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Your contributions really have made this a much better project. Earlier in the session, someone mentioned about how these conditions are enforceable. And in fact, I think that the mayor just responded to how that would be. And over the last three years, we've had many, many community meetings, large and small, to aggregate the opinions and concerns, to identify opportunities. I understand the challenges. I don't live that far away. I mean, I go through Lawrence Expressway every day, and I see the challenges. I think that with or without the Costco, this is still a very big challenge over time. And I think that our doing a urban village plan for that area is going to bring much more certainty in terms of what is to come in the future. And I know some of you have already expressed interest in participating in that, which encompasses a larger area surrounding the vicinity. Today, as has been mentioned, we are here to decide on a conditional use permit and a determination of public convenience or necessity. And this is really a unique situation. Ordinarily, a commercial project of this type would be allowed under our general plan. If they didn't want an alcohol license, it would just happen without the public process. And it would be reviewed through an administrative process and never come to the city council or the planning commission. However, here, a conditional use permit is required because Costco proposes to sell alcohol for off-site consumption, which is very different. We also had the benefit through this process to have a full environmental impact report, which provides greater transparency on impacts. My office and I have held continuous talks with community members and representatives of Costco to improve the project and mitigate its impacts. Beyond standard conditions of approval, Costco has voluntarily agreed to a large array of additional improvements, recognizing the need to be a good neighbor. And that's really included in the memo. If you've had the opportunity to look at the memo that we've brought forward, it has over four pages of conditions that we have worked with together. And I have incorporated many of your suggestions to the memo with respect to Graves Avenue access, traffic, and parking. One of the things I will say is that, and it was brought up by Doris's, Mr. Livsey's son, he brought up the idea of, you know, it's one point H. I added today the additional streets for traffic calming policies and streets to be considered for the study. It's Cordelia Avenue, Happy Valley Avenue, Brunton Avenue, Lassen Avenue, Fields Avenue, Terracida Avenue, Graves Avenue, Country Lane, and Englewood Drive. And at the planning commission, the cap was put at fifty thousand dollars. And one of the things that I've asked Costco is that when the study is done and there are impacts, that they would pay for whatever calming measures needed to be made for the area. So I know that that's a really, really big, big concern. And as far as I can understand, Costco has agreed to that. So everything that's in these, in this memo will be attached as a condition. And there are other prohibitions that I have added, especially on construction-related traffic. This is something that had not come up previously. But I know that it's twenty-one months of construction that was proposed, including Saturday work, which was on the agenda item. It said Saturdays, seven AM to seven PM. I have narrowed it down such that, in the beginning, it would be only for the six-month period. And then any kind of other Saturday work would have to be done within the building after its structure is up. So there are a number of conditions with respect to noise impacts as well, with respect to aesthetics, privacy, light and glare. And I know that there was an issue as to whether or not Title XXIV energy standards would be applicable when they change. And we have added the standards to be in place at the time that the building permit is issued. So it would be more up to date as to what would be required with respect to pedestrian safety. I know what a challenge it is in that entire area. And, you know, I continue to say this. And safety for the kids is a big deal for me. And I spoke to Costco, and I think that's why they agreed the, if you look at my memo or our memo, you will notice that there's a diagram that demonstrates the improvements. I have worked very, very closely with our Department of Transportation to ensure that these improvements really, really will help on the safety issue. And the two-point-five million just didn't come out of the sky. I got them from our traffic engineers, and they assure me that this is sufficient to be able to address. It doesn't address all four corners, but it does address the two corners necessary to provide improvements. And I am committed to find a way to be able to improve the other pork chops. One is in the city of Saratoga, and the other one is just across the street near the other side of Lawrence Expressway. So I will be committed to look for other types of funding, safer routes to schools or other types of funding to be able to do that. I also am committed to ensuring that the students at Country Lane are safe. I don't think it's acceptable to just be satisfied with a crosswalk. And by the way, the crosswalk was changed from Fields to Crespe. And ensure that it's going to be something that will work. I'm not going to go through every single detail here, but I certainly want you to know that everything in the memo is enforceable. And I guess I should ask staff to make sure that that's correct.
Yeah, these are the conditions of the project. And at the very end, there's a revoke clause. That if they violate the conditions of the permit, we have the ability to take them to hearing to revoke their permit. That's how the enforceability of conditions work.
Yeah. And I know that there was a, and I guess this is a question for the applicant because it was brought up in terms of the sign that faces Graves, such that, because it's a larger-sized sign, that it may encourage people to go that way. I don't know. But if there is a way to either reduce it or move it, or...
I believe you're referring to the sign on the east side facing Graves. We can look at looking at reducing it. So we'll work with staff.
Or even, consider even, you know, moving it over to a different place or whatever.
We'll cooperate and work with staff on that to reduce and relocate it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And staff has already mentioned the no propane to be sold. That was something that also came up. I know that there are a lot of conditions in our memo. And with that, I would move our memo with this little added item on the sign and make it as a condition of the item.
Okay, thank you, vice mayor. So we have a motion, a second with Councilor Cohen. I'm going to turn to Councilor Cohen next.
Thank you, mayor. First, I want to thank the members of the community, and not just for being here tonight, but helping in meetings that I've had with you in the last few weeks orient me on this neighborhood and your concerns. I would have come out into the neighborhood, but as you can see, I'm not very mobile right now. So it was helpful to be able to use the street view and be able to navigate my way around the neighborhood. But I appreciate that. You know, our area, Berriessa, has a Costco, and it opened on Hostetta Road in an area that, you know, is a mix, obviously, of types of uses, but with some residential nearby. The northeast San Jose Costco has made the community better. It's obvious that there's more cars on that road. In some sense, the traffic has actually slowed down significantly because of that traffic, which, you know, actually, you know, can be frustrating to people who like to speed through these intersections, but can make intersections, you know, safer for use as well. You know, having been through these big development projects in my district, and I know many of us have been through these, I know how difficult- of us have been through these, I know how difficult it is to balance the competing interests, the interest of neighbors nearby, the interest of the people who are building the project, the interest of the city, interests of businesses nearby. It's a tough thing, and I want to thank Councilmember Kamay for navigating this and working with residents to make this project better and put a lot of conditions on it. I want to thank Costco and the team there as well for working well with the council member to accept, you know, and make offers on these concessions. I know it's been mentioned already by both the mayor and councilmember and the vice mayor about, you know, these being conditions of approval and not recommendations. We're not recommending that developer do these things. These are conditions of approval that are binding when the council votes on them. So it is important for people to understand that. You know, this is one of the most thorough concessions lists that I've seen in any project that we've done, and I've, you know, I've been through some big projects myself, having 24 pages concessions with 20 independent concessions, along with a lot of sub items. There's a lot that went into this and a lot of thought, and I know that it was based on a lot of conversations with all the people in this room and many others, so I want to thank everyone for their engagement. I want to address one other thing, you know, the question of parking on the roof. You know, we've, I've made these comments a lot about our wasteful land use decisions in the past of this council, of the city, of the planning of this city. You drive through my district, North San Jose, you see buildings with giant paved parking lots that, in my opinion, are not the best use of land, and I do actually appreciate becoming, thinking outside the box and becoming a better stewards of our land. And so having parking on the roof is actually, can be a positive improvement, as opposed to large parking lots with cars, you know, taking up a lot of space. So I really think that that's helpful. In fact, one of the complaints with developers has been the fact that a lot of the buildings across the city of San Jose have what I consider to be wasteful roof space. We've talked about other uses of those roofs, green roofs, solar, and, you know, parking being on the roof is another. I was just in Seattle a few weeks ago and went to a Target there, which does it this way in a residential neighborhood with parking up on the upper floors and the store built into the building. And actually, you know, while it was unusual and different at first, it was something that worked well in that community, and so I think it can work well. And so I just want to thank Costco for good use of space here. And then the last thing I think is really important about this, these conditions of approval, is the continuing interest of the vice mayor and Costco to do, and the planning staff and DOT to do traffic studies going forward. We don't always know exactly where the impacts will be, but knowing that there will be a monitoring of those impacts and work to try to mitigate those impacts in the future is really important for the community. I can't speak for other council members and what they do in their district, but I certainly know as a council member that when we hear about traffic impacts from these projects, we work really hard to find solutions, whether it ends up being extra stop signs that are needed, or speed bumps, or rerouting of traffic. We will find those things out, and I know for a fact that I believe that Vice Mayor Kamay is interested in continuing to follow up on that and not just leaving it at the after tonight. So I think that's an important concession as well. So I'm happy to see that we've come to this point and we're able to make some improvements to this project from where it started. Coincidentally, kind of interestingly, as the vice mayor pointed out, if it weren't for the fact that this were a project that had, that needed a conditional use permit for alcohol, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to have this conversation with the community and make the project better. It would have been, had to have been accepted and installed just as it was originally designed. So I guess we got an opportunity out of what was an unusual circumstance. So I want to thank Vice Mayor and the members of the community for getting us here.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate your comments. Let me go to Councilor Candelas.
No, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm really, no, I'm grateful and happy to see so much community involvement throughout this process. I know multiple public hearings and meetings, and, you know, especially thankful to everybody who took their time to come, you know, be here almost nine o'clock on a school night, especially our high school students. And, you know, as we consider developments in our city, it's our responsibility to seek input from our community members. And I know Vice Mayor Kamay has taken much of the community's concerns and drafted a very thoughtful memo, which I was happy to join. You know, Mayor, I actually too went out there last week during school hours. I sat in the parking lot, and, you know, I saw firsthand some of the concerns, particularly regarding traffic and safety. And so I do believe that the conditions of approval included in this memorandum, which is substantial, will help mitigate those concerns. I also appreciate that the city will assess traffic flow and the impact after the Costco is built, which will help our Department of Transportation better assess the impacts. As a city, I know we're always trying to bring economic vibrancy to our neighborhoods and enhance our ability to be able to serve and provide services to our constituents. In fact, I too have a Costco in my district, and in fact, I think it's a business Costco, if I'm not mistaken. And I've heard from my residents on the value of this amenity in our district. And, you know, we can and we should address the community's needs and concerns to the best extent possible, and I do believe that our memorandum does that, and the specifications tailored to address these issues while still capturing the benefits of this development. So thank you, Vice Mayor, for including me in your Brown Act, and appreciate your leadership on it.
Thanks, Councilmember. Just on the issue of cut-through traffic, if I could just ask staff, assuming this is passed with the memo adopted, as is the motion on the floor. Actually, first, let me ask for a friendly amendment, because I think with the addition of three more local roads, we need to update it to say, and let me just be clear, this is on item 1H, if adverse effects to any of the, it says six residential streets, but now I believe it's nine in the list. Is that accurate, Vice Mayor? Okay, so if I could ask for a friendly amendment to just make that nine, so we're specifying all nine of the streets you listed, which were Cordelia, Happy Valley, Brenton, Lassen, Fields, Terracita, Graves, Country Lane, and Inglewood. Great, so staff, if you could just tell us, just so it's clear with the community, as one of the conditions of four pages of conditions that we're imposing, which I think to Councilman Cohen's point is the most conditions I've ever seen placed on a project since I've been on the council, what will happen here, assuming this passes? So we will conduct a study within 12 months. What should the community's expectation be? Who's paying for it? I know it's written out here that we've read, but I'm not sure the community has, so if you all could just tell us a little bit.
So could you clarify the conditions in general or specifically the...
No, 1H, sorry. I'm interested specifically, when I was walking around last night, I think to the point many folks here are making, on the one hand, this is not a small strip mall. This is a large, I mean, this site alone is 10 acres, but it's part of a much larger urban village with a lot of commercial space. That being said, there's a tiny wall behind the site and then a residential neighborhood. So the question, I think one of the big concerns I heard repeated, and I saw as I walked around, was one of the driveways out is into that neighborhood, and certainly, I don't think it's going to be the case, because you've got two other major roads and other ways to get in and out, but were it to be the case, that 11,000 cars were going through that neighborhood, that would be a real problem, right? So I'd like to know what the study means, what, how it will play out, who pays for it, what happens next.
Good evening. This is Manjeet Benwate with the Department of Public Works. And so, yeah, so within a year after occupancy and once Costco is operational, we will reach out to Costco and have them submit at their expense a study regarding post-studies regarding speeding and traffic volumes within those specified streets that we've laid out in the condition. And then we'll evaluate the study against our traffic calming policy that was recently updated by the Department of Transportation. And within that policy, there are thresholds for both volume and speeding. And so if there are adverse effects as a result of that study, then we'll engage, further engage DOT, our traffic calming team up there, as well as Vice Mayor Kamay's office and the community to determine what the appropriate traffic calming measures would be necessary within that neighborhood.
What might be examples of those? I think they've been referenced, but just...
It could be bull bouts, additional crosswalks, stop warrant studies if needed, speed radar signs, that sort of thing. We, I would like to say speed bumps, but usually fire doesn't like those because it does slow down the response time, so we would look at more pedestrian types of improvements within that neighborhood and to calm, further calm the streets.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that. And then it says that those improvements would be designed and constructed within two years of issuance of the study.
That is correct.
Okay, okay, great. Well, to me, there's an important provision in here. There are many others, and I know, Vice Mayor, you've worked very hard to listen to the community, to categorize all of the concerns, to, I know you spent countless hours researching them and figure out what mitigations are viable here, including millions of dollars in funding from Costco. But we will need to keep monitoring this closely and do these studies, both in the neighborhood and the cut-through traffic that folks are worried about, as well as the turn lane off the expressway there, and to what extent it backs up traffic. I mean, look, I think in general, as I mentioned, this is an area where you have a lot of different jurisdictions. You have a lot of growth, you have a lot of continued growth pressure. I think you're going to see this urban village built out over time, and we're going to have to work hard together, particularly with VTA, to identify improvements that make the roadways safer for alternative modes like bicycling and walking, but also transit, because the traffic is really, I live not far from an express, County Expressway myself, and it's similar. It's extremely backed up, and when it's not, it's extremely fast, and both are concerning. You're sitting in a lot of traffic, or people are going too fast. So we have a lot of work to do around traffic safety. It's a major focus of ours. We're not going to have one applicant fully fund the improvements that are needed there and fix it. It's a much bigger challenge, but you certainly have my commitment that I'll be working closely with the Vice Mayor, City of Saratoga, the county, and VTA to work on the mitigations that we need to make that area safer. But I know it's a challenge, and it's not going to be fixed overnight. It's been decades in the making, unfortunately. But I do think you'll see some meaningful improvements there with the investments Costco is committed to make. So Vice Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing forward a very thoughtful memo with a lot of mitigations that I do think make meaningful improvements. As always, these projects are difficult, acute local impacts, broader benefits, including more amenities and services, including more jobs, in other cases, housing. And it's always tough to weigh what's in the best interest of the city in the long run, but how do we minimize the local impacts of that? So again, thank you all for being so engaged and thoughtful. This is not the end of the conversation. I know we'll continue to engage out in the neighborhood and do our best to support you all. We have a motion on the floor. I don't see any other hands. I'm going to give colleagues a last chance to weigh in, if they have anything else they would like to ask or say. Okay, then we're going to move to a vote. Tony, would you please vote? I'm sorry, I can't take questions right now. We're in the middle of voting.
I still have two votes left. There we go. Motion passes eight to zero with fully, and Botter recused.
Okay, so that was item 10.4, which was our last agendized item. We do still have open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda, and then we will adjourn. Thank you all again for being here.
Mark Dobson, James Kirk Campbell, and I'm not sure if Steve Benetti is still here. So that's Mark, James Kirk, and Steve. Oh, LaVessa? Yes, LaVessa, come on down. I did not know you were going to make it back. Yep, wait, no, it's a minute and a half.
Okay, we're waiting on our first public speaker for, Tony, who's up first?
Whoever gets to the microphone first. So again, that's James Kirk, Steve LaVessa. Looks like she's talking to the AV team.
So I just want to say, I attended a, in District 10, a brunch the other morning, and I was very disappointed because, like I said before, I'm currently homeless, and I wanted to find solutions, and I created a survey, and I began to do these surveys. And I tried taking the survey to the brunch, and basically, they said that I couldn't do the survey, I couldn't like talk, make any announcement about the survey, which was fine, you know, although I wasn't thinking in a public space. She told me basically to go outside and do it, and I just was a little disappointed because I think it's something that could really be helpful and beneficial from a community perspective, and then there's also a public safety aspect of the data. And I know that some of the data collection efforts, they're not actually being ethically done. I've had people on transits give me their iPad, and then they've changed my answers on the iPad because they were too difficult for me to actually like understand the question, and he couldn't explain the three minutes he was on the bus doing the survey. And basically, I just don't think that's right, and I'm going to be coming back with some more data, a lot more data, and I'm hoping that it's going to be, you know, helpful, and I'm just hoping that I get community engagement between, you know, everyone. I've tried to meet with Botter, I've met with...
Go ahead.
Okay, so on 10/14, an encampment near, I'm sorry, it got swept. Okay, I can't read this. It's different from what I, I'll just say this. 120 million you guys have allocated, 27 million plus 4.8 million, no vouchers, not a translator, not a, no money, no resources, not a blanket. I will be at every meeting until these people get served, the homeless people. Two letters, nothing in Spanish. I was told that Valley Water took tools from the homeless. They were supposed to be, they were supposed to go, I don't know what I mean by that. Mayor, it seems like you don't have a plan. Why are these homeless mother, there's a homeless mother of a 13-month-old who hasn't gotten any housing or whatever. There was no deposits, no rehab, no foods, no showers, no jobs, no mental health, nothing. There was, there's nothing. Like, you guys got all of this money, and there, what's the protocol for encampments who are being swept? Like, I know the Clean Water Act is supposed to, the Clean Water Act, you got certain money for, but you don't have, there was no protocol. There were no social workers. There were no, there was nothing. And I told, I tried to warn them two months ahead. This was on San Carlos and Byrd, right behind...
Good evening. I'm going to ask you to accommodate me and not cut me off after one and a half minutes, because what I have to say is pretty serious, and I can't do it in 90 seconds. I'm here to talk about a big problem I've been having with the city for 14 years. ADA violations, discrimination, and hate crimes against me and others that are disabled. And I've been asking for the last year directly to many of the people in the city to try to address this issue. Even asked, do you have to run the clock? Can I ask for accommodations on this and not run the clock, please? It's very disturbing. I can't even concentrate on what I'm saying.
Can you take it off the screen, Tony? Let's take, let's take the time.
I know you're all tired. I know it's been a very difficult contentious day.
We also have to be fair to everybody, but if we could just take it off the screen, take it back to a minute, please.
So I'm trying to get this resolved. I've been asking. The one thing it would be very helpful is to send a simple email to all the city employees, especially those that interact with the public, and ask them to read Title III of the ADA. III of the ADA so that they are aware of it and then we can stop a lot of this discrimination and hate crimes. I've asked, Mr. Mayor, you've told me twice to schedule a meeting with you. I've tried that and it hasn't worked. And I'm running out of time. I'm at a point now where I've asked the Department of Justice to look into this and they told me to come here one more time and address the city, ask for help, and if they can't help you, to file a complaint and include all the names of the people I'm asking. I've been to all nine of the districts and there are issues in all nine districts that affect disabled people, hazards. And there is progress on this. The sidewalks are being repaired that pose a significant hazard, but unfortunately...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't give you five minutes right now. I can, I'm sorry. I can talk to you offline, but I gotta let, I gotta adjourn and let my colleagues go. Okay. All right, did we have any other public comment? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Gary. I'm a Limbrook High School student, journalist from the school's new piece of epic. Is it fine if I just like ask like a few follow-up questions since it's over?
Not, this wouldn't be the appropriate, but if you want to step aside, maybe somebody could just come over here.
Okay, okay, sorry, sorry about that.
This isn't like an interview time, yeah.
That's okay. Any other public, any other open forum, public comment?
No.
All right, thank you all, we're adjourned. Have a great evening.